Tonight on the GOAT Show.
I won't take you all the way down the rabbit hole.
Oh, yeah. Woke up a ton of women, you know, because we don't think logically like men, right? So.
How do you feel about the current Trump tax v tariff situation?
Were you homeschooled or?
Whenever like Pearl started making the rounds on Twitter.
Welcome to the GOAT Show, the show where we celebrate and debate all things great. I am joined by my co-hosts Fresh and Deezy. My name is Zilly aka Ravine. And today we have an amazing guest that is going to be on shortly. She is a true libertarian activist and defender, defender, defender of liberty. So we will get to her shortly, but before we do, Fresh, what do the people gotta do?
You gotta like, subscribe, drop a comment, hit the bell, send it to your mom, your aunt, your dad, your uncle, your best friend, anybody fighting for liberty.
Anybody fighting for liberty, anybody interested in maybe running for local office? That may be something that you may want to watch this episode. You might find some gems of wisdom here. But before we even do that, a word from our sponsors. Goats, what's something that happens once a month? Makes no damn sense. And when it does happen, we, the men, get blamed.
That's easy, bro. Like the end of the sentence, a period. Once a month, like clockwork, everything's going great. And then the wifi will go down or the AC is not cool enough. And guess who's getting the blame? Me.
As a married man, I put the blame on me every day like Akon, even when she's not flowing. And I'm not talking about rap, all right? But she found this product and it really helps. It's called NanoPads from nanocare.com. These things got some patented nanogenic technology in the pad, and it actually helps relieve cramps without chemicals or anything weird, just science doing its thing.
Dang, sounds like a game changer. And if you're a lady goat, you definitely should check out NanoPads by Nanocare. They are the best in the business. And if you go to nanocare.com and you use the code GOAT, G-O-A-T, you can get 10% off your first order of your NanoPads. Nanocare.com, NanoPads, less mess, less stress. And now back to the show. And we're back. All right, everybody, our, our guest today, she goes by the moniker Forrest Mommy. Her real name is Jessica Fenske, and she is a libertarian activist, libertarian podcaster. She's a friend of liberty and we here are also friends of liberty. So without further ado, Forrest Mommy, welcome to the GOAT Show. Happy to have you here today.
Hi, thanks for having me.
All right, let's get, let's get into it. So the way we found out about you, or at least, at least how I found out about you, is over, over the years, I've seen your face pop up on different programs that I enjoy, most notably Chrissy Mars simp cast. I've seen you on there and, and in some other places. But then our friend Adam Choi, who we've talked about on the show, who made the fantastic short film, The Edited. He interviewed you and, and recommended that we have you on. So here you are. We appreciate you coming on and that's how we know you. Something we ask every guest that comes on our show is, what is, if you could have one superpower, what would it be?
Flying, like flying, basic, yes. Just flying over things, being able to fly places. That'd be pretty cool.
All right. I mean, I, I think that's a good superpower.
Totally selfish. Like I wouldn't save people with it or do anything good with it. I would just like cruise around. It would just be super fun.
Okay. If you had the flying power, where would you fly to first? Like what would be your first destination?
I would just fly over the mountains a lot and sightsee. Look at the mountains.
You want to fly 351 or fly to?
Well, yeah, I'm sure I would do stuff like that, but I just always like, because I'm out here in Colorado, grew up in, you know, in the mountains a little bit. And I just always wanted to like, you know, you fly over in an airplane, but you can't really, like, it would just be cool to be able to fly and land.
It's like the, it's like the opening to The Shining, just like flying.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, exactly. Be fun.
Okay, cool, cool. Love to hear it.
Super deep.
Put it in a spot. Tell us about your superhero origin story. Every, every superpower belongs to a superhero. What is your superhero origin story? Maybe where you grew up, what your life is like growing up?
Yeah, it kind of fits. So I was actually born in Chicago and then in 1990, my dad was like, we're getting the fuck out of Chicago and moved to Colorado. And this was, everything was cheap in Colorado. So I was six years old. So I got to grow up not in Chicago, but in like on 10 acres of forested land out in the boonies. So that's kind of, that's partly where the name comes from too. We still have the family property and the forest stuff. But I was a lot younger than my siblings. So I was the only one who really got to grow up there. I was basically an only child. So I spent a lot of time alone in the forests and stuff. So maybe I like seeped some of it in as my, you know, superhero thing, I guess. But yeah, and just like, I'm thankful as hell. I got to grow up that way and it's kind of helped. You know, I can't imagine what I would have been like if I grew up in a city versus like just being alone and really introspective as a kid, quiet as a kid. And yeah, I don't know. I just love it. Like I love nature and all that.
Was there, so I'm kind of curious about, about this. So when you were growing up, were you homeschooled or did you go to local school or were you, was it still, you know, or were you, were you really?
No, no, it's like, there was, I went to public school and in fact, this, I mean, this was before, I'm old, right? So this was before, I mean, the public schools were starting to go downhill, but they weren't, no one told me I was a boy at school. So that was pretty cool growing up, you know, but they, my mom was a public school teacher too, for a little bit. She went back to work and, but yeah, it was just public school. I went to two different elementary schools. One was the small, and then my mom taught at another one that was way out in Colorado. It was a little bit further. So there was like 13 kids in my fifth and sixth grade class. It was really small, really rural. There was, you know, cows next door and stuff, but, so I got public school, but it was not as bad. And it was out in beautiful places, rurally at least. So a little bit better than average.
Right. I just, I guess I bring that up because I grew up in a rural area too, a grip in rural Appalachia, you know, border of Virginia, West Virginia. So, and. It was, it was. I mean, it wasn't until, you know, kind of high school that I, I got out of the boonies. But I feel like though, it's also mountainous area. I don't know if you're in the mountainous part of Colorado. I assume so because of the forest and all that, but I feel like mountain people are super cool. Mountain people are the best. I don't know how you feel about that. They, I always feel like mountain people are more chill. They're a little bit more kind of keeping themselves and, and, you know, they're, they're, they're very down, you know, down to earth type of people. I don't know if, was that kind of your experience growing with them, growing up in that environment?
Oh, yeah. And that's like how Colorado was. It was very, everyone just leaves everyone alone. There was enough space, you know? It's changed over the years, but yeah, it was, you know, I always liked the real mountain people too, because they always have like 10 cars stacked in the light. You know, they're just like, it's hillbilly stuff too, but it's like, I love it. But yeah, everyone out here is always, it used to be a very like, the Libertarian Party was actually started in Colorado. I don't know if people know this, but it was started in Colorado. And it just had that vibe. I'm sure that's why my, my dad's not like necessarily libertarian or anything, but I think that's why, what brought him out here was just that, yeah, they could get away. My parents were, had good foresight. I think they were seeing what was happening in the cities and the public school, like the bad public schools and stuff. So yeah, mountain people are always, it's always, they're always chill and cool. And they say the forest especially, especially pine tree forest actually does, this is kind of hokey, but they do like, it has a stress relieving agent. So when the wind blows and stuff, so I'm sure it's all forests are like that, but just chills you out a little bit, you know?
Wait, wait, didn't, didn't the, the Egyptian Anunnaki have like a pine cone, like thing? You know what I'm talking about? Are we gonna go there on this?
We can. I don't know. I'd have to learn about it, but.
Okay, okay. Apparently there's some, there's some, you know, in, I think it's like the Egyptians, right? They have an engraving or.
I mean, look, I won't take you all the way down the rabbit hole, but what I will say as I kick you down it is, the Pope wears the same fish hat on his head and carries the pine cone that the Sumerians also had. That's, that's.
Is it actual pine? They had pine forests and in that time?
It's a pine cone. I don't know if it's, it's like pine forests per se, but they definitely worship the pine cone.
I mean, rumor has it that.
Synology, maybe.
Yeah. Well, they say it might be the pineal gland or something like that, or.
But they carry around.
Right.
Carry the pineal gland in your hand.
So it's like a talisman or like they have some, it's something to them.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I should start doing that just for fun. People will be like, what? Is she like the Illuminati now? What is she doing? I put a new picture on my, I put a new picture on my Twitter and one of my, it's just, it's just edited to my, one of my eyes uncovered. And all these people are like, oh, you got the Illuminati here now.
We did a whole, we did a whole episode of us was doing that on purpose, just to get speculation flowing.
I love it.
We'll, we'll find that picture of the, of the statue, whatever, and send it to you. You can, you can put your face on it and then get everybody freaked out. But I want, I want to go back to this thing you were talking about with, with, you know, leaving Chicago, coming to Denver and then, and, or coming to Colorado. And then, you know, Colorado's evolution. For your parents, like, what would make them suddenly go, hey, out of here? No more Chicago. On a rap, this is a rap. We're gonna head to Colorado and do our Colorado country thing.
I think it was just, it was opportunity. My parents are boomers and they like, they were, my mom didn't work then. You know, it was very classic nineties, eighties, nineties, growing up, but I think they, my dad just did not want to raise us in the city. Cause there's four, I'm the youngest of four and like, so my older sisters did kind of grow up in the suburbs of Chicago. But I think my dad just did not want us living, he didn't want to raise us there. He was raised there. And it was, it was total, I always like, they say babies choose the family before, like that's what some people say, like as you choose. And I'm like, oh, that would make sense because my dad just like, it's like, we're going to Colorado. He had an opportunity out here for a job too. My dad's blue collar and he was National Guard, didn't go to college or anything. But he had a friend from college had a job out here for him. And so we moved like near where they are, which is like an hour outside of Denver, the area where the forest is and stuff. Yeah, I think my dad was just, he's just like a little bit of a rebel, I guess. He was wanting to get out of there. Cause my mom's family is Italian and they are, you know, they're huge family in Chicago. So like they, they left like, you know, kind of go off on themselves a little bit, which I, I think that kind of got into me, my blood too, where it's like, you can just kind of do your own thing. It's okay. You'll survive. You figure it out.
Right.
But yeah, thank God. I remember when we first pulled up and like, I was like, we're really gonna live here. There's like foothills and like, you know, it's a barn, a tree house and all this stuff. It's just like, are you kidding me? And I was six. So I was like, the best way to raise a kid. I mean, you can only do what you can only do, right? But I was like, so thankful I got, and I got, but we never had animals. Cause my family bought out there because it was cheap back then. They weren't like rural people naturally. So I got to ride everybody else's horse. I got to learn how to ride horses because everybody else has horses. I got to like babysit their dogs and all this stuff. You know, there's animals everywhere for me and my parents didn't have to like pay for any of them. So I got my fill of like hanging out the animals as a kid. But it was, it was just like, you look back on your life now that I'm old, over the hill. It's like, you look back on that kind of stuff and like appreciate it so much, you know, just those little things.
Yeah, I feel the same way in many ways these days, but you know, now, now, now that area where I grew up in is like, from what I understand is not as safe as it used to be because of all the, all the good stuff, that good stuff coming through there. Let's just say that. How, how would you say, because I remember back in the day that, that Colorado and in that area was a, it was an escape spot for people who love freedom, wanted to be free. You know, I remember, I remember Rogan moved out there for a little while and before he came back to LA. And, and so I'm just curious, over the past, you know, say 20 years, having grown up in, in Colorado, how do you feel that it's changed over the years?
Well, as everybody says, it's California's fault, but I won't totally blame them. But I mean, I remember growing up, even the nineties, people like saying things about California is coming there. So I think there must've been some aspect of that, just people moving there. The area where I live, it's still rural, but like where my high school was, it's, it used to be a tiny little town and it's blown up. There's just been so much building out here of like tract home type neighborhoods. And yeah, the last, the people just started moving here. I would say early 2000s, we started getting a lot more people moving here. And then, you know, and that, and you, they concentrate more in the cities, obviously. And then we have Boulder out here, which you know Boulder is. And then they like, it just, they filled up. They just came and they just voted the same. They just like, did the same thing, you know? And as where they left and it was cheaper out here. So they would sell in California and be able to buy like a ton, you know, something cool out here, something big. And, and then we legalized pot in 2023 and that's a, that's when the real boom, which some people, you know, obviously we're liberty people. So we're like, heck yeah. But you know, we're all so smart and you have to think of the downsides of these things. And you know, what comes with it. And so we had a huge boom after that happened. There were so many people moving here, just like, I think it was like a hundred, was like net a hundred thousand every year for like three or four years in a row, just a ton of people here. Obviously, you know, this, just the people who like, don't think about politics, they just vote them because they think it's Democrat. Like, you know, they're just not involved. They don't really, oh, Democrats are the good people. They're not the fascist, right? Even though they are, but it's like, they're just an average person. So that's how they voted out here. And that's just kind of, and, and there's been some crazy stuff that happened out here politically that changed it too, including four leftist billionaires. Well, and the guy who's the governor now, but they like, they had this all planned out to change the, to completely change how Colorado was. And they won. They're so, like, they really did do it too. It's just like, you go back and look at this stuff and you're just like, wow. It, it was always kind of more purple, I would say, because the cities were some more rural, definitely more, more red, just because there's more rural at that time. But yeah, now it's just, now it's blue, 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 blue. It's nuts.
Dang. It's all because you weed smokers out there, kind of ban weed. Depending weed.
Yeah.
Nobody can move and take over other states. That's my position.
It's more, it's, it's the white liberal women. That's their fault, actually, more than anybody's fault for the progressive women. I'll just say it. I don't care. I can say it because I'm a white woman too.
Yeah, most men, most men vote right anyway.
Yeah.
Well, last election, that, I think that became pretty clear. Although a lot of women voted for Trump, I guess, but.
Yeah, I think every, every, yeah, every demographic voted for him a little bit more, I believe.
Yeah, yeah. Let's, we'll come back to that. I want to get on this liberty track though, because, so I mean, you said that growing up, you had, it was sort of a, you experienced a certain freedom from the way you grew up, but what would you say is like your real, like the beginning of maybe, maybe the point in which you would say like, I'm a libertarian and what led to that?
Oh, well, I mean, it's actually, don't tell anybody I'm a libertarian, first of all. Hey, second of all, just kidding. I guess like to actually, because I, I moved out really young. My parents were great and stuff, but I was like, I want to move out of my young. And it wasn't a feminism thing because I'm definitely that age of the older millennials where they were like hitting on that. So I moved out young and just kind of was free. I got to live my life, even though I was broke, you know, when you were young, broke and happy. Remember those days? How happy those days were. But yeah, and then I, but to say I was actually like libertarian, I was probably just in the last five years, just since COVID and all that.
I want to, I want to dig deeper into the sort of, you know, you go on your own path because I, I have two friends. They just had kids, you know, and, and we joke and I joke with them. I'm like, are you free ranging the kids? Are you free ranging the kids? Like, you know, are you going to put them in, you know, the public school system or whatever? So, and I'm kind of curious from your perspective, because I know that you have family of your own. How do you feel about how kids are raised? And, and do you lean on the side of, because I have another set of friends that are doing the whole, like they are free ranging the kids. And they're like, they don't teach them nothing. They're like, whatever they want to do, they'll figure it out and I'm just here to assist. So I don't, I don't know. What's your position on that? What's your perspective on this idea of letting kids learn in a free way?
First, I don't have any kids of my own. I just want to make sure everyone knows that.
Okay.
Why the moniker is especially funny, but so nowadays, I mean, nowadays I wouldn't have my kids in public. I wouldn't put kids in public school, especially where I'm at. We, there's been like eight, eight different pedophile stories that have come out in the last year and a half from the school district. So I wouldn't do that. And then, yeah, like, but there's those parents who say like, you can't say no. I'm like, no, you say no, you have that, you have to have boundaries and you can, you can even teach your child to read before they go to kindergarten and stuff too. Like there's, you can still be an active parent, right? And, but yeah, now I, I wouldn't do like total free range because I'd be making them clean my house and stuff like that, like how I was raised, you know, get the like, kid, kids' hands are smaller. So it like, you know, oils the baseboard better and stuff like that. So.
Child labor.
Yeah.
Bring back.
There are people who are too free, too free range for sure, like not saying no things. I nannied a lot. And I remember there was people like, didn't say no to their children. And I was like, and guess who they behave better around? Me. Cause I was like, no, you know, like there's boundaries. So, yeah, that's what I'd say.
All right. Was there something you wanted to ask these?
No, I was just gonna say for me growing up, those boundaries were enforced by potential violence. So you stood in line.
Yeah, we had the wooden spoon, which I like, I'm still on the fence about all corporal punishment and stuff. But I'm like, at a certain age, you gotta kind of do a physical consequence a little bit, right? Before they kind of like put logic and my parents probably went overboard a couple of times, but what can you do? We're alive still.
A little, a little, I think a little spanking your kid when they do really, really bad stuff is not horrible. There's obviously a line with that, but you're parenting.
You gotta make them go find their own switch. It's, it's the psychological warfare that matters more.
Yeah, my dad's, my dad would always, he still says it because he loves saying things. He goes, when they fear you, they respect you. He would just say that.
I mean.
That's why I moved out. That's why I moved out because I wanted to smoke pot. I wanted to have sex. And I know if any of that happened under my parents' roof, they would have killed me, even though I was like working after high school and stuff. But I was like, all right, I'm, I'm out. I want to have sex outside of marriage and not die. So.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like boundaries are important and disciplining grit is important, you know, because I'm not going to say who, but there are people I know that maybe had a little bit laxer growing up than I did as a, as a son of, you know, helicopter Indian parents. And yeah, they just, they, they don't have the grit, like they don't have the, the focus, the, you know, the, the, the continue to work on something and do something, you know, when it gets tough, you know what I'm saying? So I feel like that's like, at least that, that minimum would be something that I want to teach my kids. But I don't know. Stefan Molyneux, if you disagree with what we're saying, come on the show. All right? We'll have you anytime of the week. You tell us how to negotiate with these children in a nonviolent fashion.
No, I don't, I don't negotiate with kids or terrorists. Fuck that. Neither of those people are getting what they want from me.
If you're a kid and you're a terrorist, Fresh is not going to.
Oh, kid terrorists are, are getting even less.
Sorry, what were you gonna say?
Well, just like, you have to like teach them failure. You have to like, you have to go through failures and not being allowed to do things. Like, look at all these people getting fired from the federal government and they're literally melting down about it. And it's like, I got my first, I got laid off from my first job when I was 22 and I was on my own. I didn't have credit cards. I didn't have like backup. It's like, I still figured it out. It was a different time back then, but like, this is your first time, people have you never had any like, anything happen in your life? Like, which they haven't.
Never been fired and told you, told your check is in the mail and then it never comes and you gotta pay rent?
That's the new like, uh, walking uphill in the snow both, both ways. That's ours. Like, yeah, we lost our jobs back in the day and we had to pay rent.
All right. Well, so, so you're always a freedom loving person. You're always somebody, you know, you go on your own way. When did, when did sort of, from my understanding, you're always liberty minded, but COVID and the whole COVID regime, which I definitely had endured in LA during that time. That's where I met Angela. How, how did you kind of rise in, on, on Twitter and these places, you know, commenting on COVID and that type of thing? And what was your experience during that time period?
Yeah. So I was just like, not political. I need to blow my nose. I'm sorry.
Oh, good. We can pause it. Pause. Anything else I gotta do anything?
I gotta, I gotta warn you that your part of this episode might not be uploading to StreamYard right now, brother.
Who?
You.
You.
Why?
I don't know. Go to.
Rest of the recording section.
And see what yours says. Is yours on there?
Your name's not there, right? It is what it is. We got, we're gonna have to finish it now and work around it. Whatever happens, happens.
You could, you could probably clip the, the main video if you have need be.
Main video? Okay. Sorry about that. I didn't realize what was, what was going on. Okay. StreamYard is pissing me off. They've been messing with us for episodes. All right. Sorry about that. All right. Well, as long as we can, we can salvage it, then we should continue. If not, then.
Yeah.
We can? Okay. All right. All right. Let's continue then. And we're back. So the, yeah, just wondering what your experience is with, you know, when, you know, the COVID time period and, and, you know, sort of before and after, and, and how you, during that time period, were able to comment and build your audience online.
So I had, I started a Twitter at the end of 2019 because I used to be on Facebook and I kept getting banned on Facebook, not for politics stuff really. But I just, I don't know. I just rub my mouth sometimes. Um, I remember I actually got introduced a little bit to libertarian people on Facebook right before, uh, so during COVID, I, I got off Facebook like end of February, even before everything went nuts. And got back on my Twitter and I started, you, Twitter, I mean, it was bad back then with the censorship, but all the information during COVID was on Twitter. And I knew something was wrong with what was going on. I didn't agree with any of it. I'm like, why are these not healthy people telling me how to be healthy? You know, all this weird stuff going on. I've spent all my life like being as health, like when I was on my own, young, I didn't want to pay, I had to pay for health insurance for a while. I'm like, oh, when I was like 19. So I was always like, well, I'm just going to be as healthy as I can. So I don't need, you know, so I don't need, you know, I can avoid as much as I can. Obviously some things are out of control, out of control. But yeah, I got on Twitter and I just, it's funny because like no one saw my stuff like May-ish of 2020. But um, yeah, it was, it was just fun to say whatever you wanted to say back then and find the information. And I found, then I found more like libertarian people through there, like the bigger names and then, then locally a handful of people. And I, I don't know why it got bigger. I guess just because I'm myself, like I'm, I'm very genuine. I'm not like, I'm not trying to be anything. And I made a video, this is what kind of started a little bit. I made this video in May, May 2020, where I was like looking out the blinds with my binoculars. And I made this whole like little skit. It was, it's so cringy, but it was like so true, but it was happening like, and I'm like, oh, there's someone out there and they're walking their baby. The baby's gonna die and they're not standing far enough apart, you know, doing all, just like total mocking it. And people like that. And then I just, I've always just been, just said what I wanted to say because I don't, I don't, I don't, I don't work. So I don't really get, I'm not cancelable really. And like, I don't have kids for them to retaliate against. And like, I, I just, I just never, even when people try to cancel me or dox me, it only helps me or goes in my favor, which that happened a little later on. But yeah, it's just getting on Twitter was a nice, it, it was just a way to say things and find people and find the information. And that's pretty much all I do is Twitter or X.
The, with the COVID thing, what was the, because one thing I thought about with Angela, and I, and I think this is really true, is that, let's just say pre-COVID, don't get mad at me libertarians, but pre-COVID, liberty movement was pretty male. I mean, it was pretty, like it was dudes, it was bros. You know what I'm saying? Like it was, it was a bro fest. Nothing wrong with that. I'm just saying that, but you know, it, it, there wasn't really a, an issue that were, for a lot of women was, was really important and really affected them in my opinion, in a way where it was visceral. It was like, oh my gosh, like what's going on here? And, and I noticed, you know, because I'd go to libertarian meetings before COVID and then after COVID, there'd be more women at, at the meetings. And it's because of bodily autonomy and, and, you know, this, this sort of regime being forced on everyone. I'm kind of curious about your perspective on that. Do you feel like COVID in a way was, I won't say it's good, but it, there was silver lining of it was that it did wake up a lot of women to what was going on?
Oh, yeah. Woke up a ton of women, you know, because we don't think logically like men, right? So that's why the whole liberty, libertarian, the whole liberty, it's like out of the grass, right? But it maybe it took, yeah, the silver, I mean, it changed my life. I'm still like, I'm not a victim, but I say I have PTSD for me, even though it didn't affect my life like that much. I just got, couldn't go to yoga anymore. even though it didn't affect my life like that much. I just got, couldn't go to yoga anymore, you know, all this stuff that was just like stupid. But, um, yeah, it definitely woke a ton of people up. I think it, it got a lot more, um, families involved to a lot more like people who are maybe conservative, but they're not GOP. And then they were like, we, we want, we ought to do something. We want to, you know, this is the way you have to do it is libertarianism. Um, and Angela rocked, man, because she was, I remember I saw her early on and she's kind of who helped inspire me. Because so many people talk, talk, right? But they don't do anything. But like Angela was out there doing stuff, building that little guillotine, you know? And, and it just, it may, it made people have to be a little more brave. Like I definitely got more brave. Yeah.
Oh, who may be watching. She built, what she built like a, I mean, it wasn't, well, was it real? I don't know. I don't think it was real.
It was like wood and cardboard, I think.
Yeah, yeah. And it was like guilty and you could wear it. She wore it or something like, or no, I can't remember.
It was, I just remember seeing her. She was like building it with tools and I was like, wow, this is so impressive.
We'll have to find.
But yeah, yeah. And she set up like a hotline for like a anti hot, like she said, call people if you want to snitch on them. Because they were doing snitch lines, but it like went to something else. I remember she did something like that too. It's funny.
I'll have to look back at that. Yeah, she's awesome. She's great. So, okay. So you're talking about COVID, you're building an audience. And then at what point did you start doing, uh, you know, podcasting and, and, and the live streaming and stuff like that?
Um, I started, I was like, I don't want to be a liberty, another libertarian of the podcast, right? But we were all home and start, you know, I started talking to people this way. And it was actually the end of 2021 or like October, a friend of mine on Twitter. And I, I got banned off of Twitter a couple of times during those dark times. And we had both gotten banned around the same time. And I was like, well, let's start streaming. So I was starting like figure this, uh, figure it all out. Um, and, uh, that was like the first kind of show I did, I guess, was with my co-host Hexcelery. And, um, he, me, just like, we started out, we were just like, we just talked for hours and hours, bring other, other people could come in and out. Wasn't structured or anything. It was like, but it's so many fun, like so met so many people. Because it is nice to talk to people, right? Like it's not face to face, but it's like you get to know them. Uh, one time like we were on, uh, we were on with one guy Quincy, he's a black truck driver. And he was in Colorado somewhere in small town and like you heard guns, we heard gunshots and he goes, oh, and then like hung up. But it was just like some heck shit and like the like his brother in law shooting at some way. It was just like, but he was like the only black person there. It's like he was all freaked out. But yeah, it just started doing that and then kind of like made it more of a structured show. That's the one called Golden Showers, which everyone's like, why do you call it that? Even my, even my mother, my mother was asking me and I looked at her, I'm like, how do you know what that means, mother?
But I, I don't know if my mom, moms are watching. I don't know if she, I don't know if she watched. I don't think she does, but if she does, everything I say is. I, whatever, I'm your son.
They, and my parents have learned, I mean, they've learned that with me that. Uh, but yeah, so I, I call it golden shower Sunday street, just like I tell people because I want what people think of golden showers. They'll think of me and like something better than just pee, right? And it, and it kind of did work for a while. People would see golden showers trending or whatever, like Trump. And they're like, oh, I thought this was a podcast. I'm like.
Right, right.
But, um, yeah, and then that's just, uh, I got like, I found a producer and like, we, we all have like kind of splatter off shows. But I have last, I ran for office in 2023 and I kind of like, that took the wind out of me a little bit, but I still do stuff here and there. I have a new show on Friday nights now, which is just a drunken mess, which is fine. And so, yeah, that's how I got there.
Well, there's, there's, okay, so let me, there's, there's, there's a golden shower stream Sundays, from what I understand. And then there's Scissor Me Timbers, which is, uh, another show. What, what is that show?
Scissor Me Timbers is girls only and started out with me and my friend Alice, which we used to, we, this is 2022. We started doing those. I haven't done one of those in a while either, but we just get drunk and talk for hours and hours. I've sometimes had other women on, Chrissy Mayer has been on. It's really not like, like we talk politics and all that stuff too. It was just a girl, it was just a girl's show. But, uh, yeah, those ones were always fun to met and met some like brought some other girls on and to talk. That was my idea. It's me, Alice, and then a guest or two. But like I said, I haven't done that. I think only did like 50 episodes of that. I need to get back on that one too.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. And then I recently, now there's a new one called The Correct Opinion that I do with my producer Paul. So that's a new channel we did on rumble. It's not associated with my stuff, but that's our Friday night one.
Gotcha. Gotcha. All right. Well, we'll put, we'll put the links in the show notes so everybody can see y'all yap. Yap it out. Uh, and then you've been on Simcast a lot with, uh, with Chrissy. So that's, that's kind of where I originally.
Yeah, that's super, a super cool for, because I was just some random person on Twitter and like that was why Twitter was cool. It's because you could connect with people, right? Yeah, she just started asking me on. I haven't been on a ton because I have lately, I think they've been running out of regular. People go, you know, that's just people's lives change, whatever. But I know, I'm not a gamer and I wasn't like super into like pop politic topics, I guess I would call. But so I was like the vibe, I never quite got the vibe, but that last couple of times and you, she has random people on this. One time I was on, she had this like, uh, porn star from Madison, Wisconsin, who just was talking. And like, I just was getting drunk because she was going off the rails and like, it was just the most hilarious, like that stuff I love. I love stuff like that. But yeah, Chrissy's been awesome to me and all their like big name YouTube, they all fight with each other, you know? And I'm like, and I like, I like all like these different people who are fighting sometimes. I'm like, I don't care. Like.
Yeah, I feel the same. I feel the same way. Yeah, yeah. Okay. Um, let's talk about your run for city council. So at some point you said to yourself, you know what? I'm gonna take this no more. I'm gonna run for city council. Tell us, where did that start and, you know, how that, how, how that all unfolded?
So with COVID, I learned my real enemies are my local government, you know, my local public health department, my city council, gov, my county government. It's so bad exactly where I am too. The like, the progressives took over here. It's nuts. But so I started getting a little more involved with LP Colorado. And by involved, like I'm, I'm not like a proselytizer or anything like that, like, but I would help volunteer if they had a booth or something somewhere, you know, stuff like that. Um, so I got more, I got to know more local people who have been in local politics for a long time, who've been fighting the actual, like, they know everything, you know, that I wish I had been paying attention years, two years ago, two years ago. Um, yeah, and then like, I was just like, okay, well, someone has to do this stuff, right? And like, a lot of people don't want to because they have families, they don't have time, they work, they're, they're in the productive class, like they're productive. So they don't have time for this stuff, which is how they take over local is like, no one's really paying attention. They come in the school district, take that over, then they take the county over and then they try and take towns over. And it's, it's just madness. And I didn't even know that really. So another guy who was libertarian, he said he was running for the other district that was up. And I'm like, well, let me check in our Vada, that my district's up this year and it was. So I was like, all right, let's do this. So, so I didn't know what I was doing. It's nonpartisan. It's not like, you know, it's small. Um, so I went and filled out my affidavit, filed it and like I posted something online like, well, I'm doing it, you know? And what's funny is it's a nonpartisan race, but I still, I still like, I was just filling the thing out and our libertarian party, blah, blah, blah. And like the lady called me, she's like, do you want that on there? And I'm like, well, it doesn't show up on the ballot, right? So what does it matter? And they were like, okay, well, later on they wrote a hit piece. They're like, these libertarians are coming in and like, blah, blah, blah. But the best part was the day after I, so I posted my affidavit on my account, like I'm doing this, blah, blah. Literally the next day and nine news journalists out here, Jeremy Jojola, he, we, we had, I, we fight with this. And they're like, they're the worst proper, the, when you think of the left propagandist people, that's like what they are. They're, they're a big problem in Colorado, turning it blue too. Yeah, literally the next day, this nine news journalist posted, he made this whole long thread. He took my photo and we had each other blocked. So I'm like, you creep, you were watching my page. But he took it and he's like, this is Jessica Fensky. She hates the government and she wants to get in government. And she's anti-vax and blah, 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 which wasn't much anti-mandate, but you know, they have to like slur you as much as they can. So he shared it and then he, what he did in the thread, he wrote this whole long thread about me. I'm, I'm like a normal girl, you know, this is a ethical journalist. And he took my affidavit and posted it, which it was, it was public records, but the way he did it was doxing. Because my name, my address was on it because I didn't have like a P O box or anything for my, this race. I'm like, no, I live right here. So he posted that and so it went, it went, it, it went way the way he didn't want it to go. It blew up like, uh, people I don't even like, like Jesse Kelly and stuff shared it. Like it went huge and like, because basically he gave me free advertising. He even put my photo there and he was like, everyone was like, that sounds pretty good. Actually, she hates the government. Was it? And that helped fund, it helped fundraise my whole campaign because I had my, I knew Twitter, I would be able to, people would monetize and stuff. But that helped like get it even like bigger. So he helped fundraise for me by trying to dox me and he deleted that. And then he gave this whole long apology and he says, I was talking to a guy who said something about his dad online or something. And that's why he went like, hey, I'm like, what are you talking about? So, and I, I did, his name's Jeremy Jojola and he's with the NBC affiliate out here. And so in January, so that was March, in January, he had tech, my friend made parody accounts of them online on Twitter. And like he dot, he texted my friend. It was like threatening my friend through texts, like I found your number, blah, blah, blah. So then me and my friend did a, a, did a live stream where we're like, we're just exposing this dude. We, we doxed our, you know, we said our names and stuff like that and like did this whole thing. And then in March, when he did that to me, where he did it more publicly, he like, he referenced, he took a clip from that live stream, which didn't even, no one was talking about his dad. He's like, they were talking about, but then no one was talking about his, like, it's just, it was really bizarre. And it was, it really helped spark, not say like I'm a culture changer, but it really helped Colorado kind of come around. Like, hey, we gotta like, these are the people we need to be, this is what we need to be do, we need to be radical. Because the GOP doesn't want to be radical enough, but they do, but they're not like, they don't want to, you know? And so it helped kind of like break down some barriers between GOP and libertarians. And even moderate Democrats and stuff are like sick of all this BS going out here with the progressives. But yeah, it was just, I mean, that was, it was terrible that day. Like it's like, like my, my husband was all mad. I'm like, I don't know what to do. Luckily, nothing came of it because I live like this, the, this, this house is like, it's a blue collar neighborhood. Kind of everyone owns their own business or, you know, there's come, there's no like regular schedules around here. So nothing ever came of it, but that's how evil they were. Yeah. And then another person wrote this article about the libertarians, blah, blah, blah. And it was like, it was just like dumb. It's like, they're just the regime progressive, you know? He stopped posting on Twitter too for, I'm like, he got told, because in his apologies, like my coworker told me that wasn't, she might, because he wrote, she might think this is doxing, but it's not. And then he's like, well, someone said it might be not like, it's just like. And I tried, I tried to like file a complaint. I tried to file a complaint and like they wouldn't take my calls for like two weeks straight. I called, I'm like, I'm not normally gonna like call and complain, but that's kind of a big deal what he did. And, well, they were, it's, he still works there, but he's like, he's not, he stopped using Twitter. Like, you would think, that's how they are out here though. There's like this group of dudes that work at the station and that's, they're just like these weird propagandists. They attack old elderly GOP ladies. They're like, oh, these ladies want to protect their community, racist, Nazi. You know, it's just like, it's insane what they do.
Wow, that is crazy. And this is why people don't want to do that, like, because the, the truth is, your local, I mean, you tell me, the local government and what they're doing is probably in many ways more important to keep track of and look at than, you know, whatever's happening nationally or even at the state level, right? I mean, um, and something like this, like.
Property tax.
Right, right. What do you think of the property tax? I know, I know, DeSantis just said, I'm out here in Florida. So he just said that they're trying to do away with it. What about what's going on in Colorado? What do you think of this whole property tax thing?
Well, we've had, so we have a thing here in Colorado called Tabor and it's called, it's a taxpayer, taxpayer bill of rights that this crazy dude back in the nineties got people to vote on, which basically put caps on what the government can take. And they have to ask for, they have to do a ballot issue for tax increases. And, um, and if there's so much money on top of this line, everybody gets it back. So it's kind of like socialism a little bit, but whatever, at least protects the taxpayers a little. And we get the money, not the government just hanging on to it. So it, there was issue, they've worked their way around it, right? Of course, the government knows, like they worked their way around this with fees and stuff, but they did something. And, and because of all the people moving here and the market going crazy, the property taxes obviously went up with, uh, value, with valuations. And then like actually went up. And then I live in a county where they convince people through a ballot measure, using taxpayer dollars to get people to vote away. Um, even in this county, you would get, if you owned a house, you would get a little bit of a refund on your property tax. And it was like 80 bucks. It wasn't like a ton of money, but it was money going back to the people. I like, that's, I don't even care. That was admin costs and stuff, but so they've been fighting that and like, and they, so now my county got rid of that. So now they can keep even more money to do whatever they want. And they, they literally say, so if you are an older person who's owned a home for like 30 years, you've been faithfully paying your property taxes, you've been keeping your property up, you're doing all the things. And now these people are like, and now you have your house paid off, but you're, you know, you're on a budget because you're retired. And these people out here are like, we'll get a reverse mortgage and be, so you can pay your property tax, which like, that's how greedy, they really see it as their money. They see it as their money. And so that's at the county level and that's what I've been fighting. And they, like, the schools that can raise the mill, the city can raise the mill. So all, yeah, the local stuff is, and out here, it's just insane once I start paying attention because they had this whole progressive. They had it all ready to go and it like basically started in this county where like they build up these candidates. And they're all like that. They just, they're all nonprofits and ne- never worked any job other. Oh, and teachers, a ton of teachers that became politicians, like never worked a job, like a regular money job, right? And they're who running things. So of course they're always going to be like taxes are our money. That's our money because you're our chattel slaves, you know? It's crazy.
So I got a question for you. Uh, how do you feel about the current Trump tax v tariff situation? And, you know, what has been proposed and a lot of the stuff floating around? What do you think about it?
Um, I'll be honest, I haven't been paying as much attention to it. But to me, the tariff is when you buy something. So you're being taxed when you buy something. I know it can cause issues, but that seems better than just like always taxing you. I don't know, but it seems like he was using it for negotiation mostly, right? Because then everyone like backed down, like changed their minds. So in that way, I don't know. I don't, I don't know how it can work at, how taxes at that grand of a scale anyways. That's, I'm a woman again, like there's these things that are just too.
And I said, you said it, we didn't say nothing on this show.
I have to fill my mind with, the local stuff is just, it really fills your mind, like right now in our legislative session. So every week we have a, my friend Brandon Work, uh, Free State Colorado, he does a live stream where we go over the bills of the week that these people are pushing through and it's, and there's so much, and I testify on a lot of those bills. There's just so much to look at that.
I mean, it's so much that I find this super fascinating just because most, most Americans do not, until it really hits them locally. They don't get involved in any of the local politics. They don't pay attention. I, I wonder, is it, is it easy to keep track of the stuff now? Like to look at what bills are being brought up and all that kind of stuff? Or is it still a challenge? Or, or I mean, was it, I don't know. I'm just like, why is it?
I never did before. Yeah, I never did before. So now it is easier because I have a big, because of Forrest mommy Twitter, like there's just a ton of people now who are getting involved. And I'm like, you have the people who pay more attention to educational stuff, the people, the gun stuff, you know, all this and that. So it's a little easier in that sense. Um, like my, like I said, my friend does the live stream and it's so easy and teaches you how to sign up to testify, which you can testify from home on Zoom, you know, like a glass of wine and yell at them a little bit, you know, like, but it's hard, it is hard because no, okay, so that's, that's just the state, like our state legislative session, which is like five months. And then, you know, your, your city councils are meeting usually once a week, sometimes it's public comments, sometimes it's not. So then you have to watch those and then it beats people, there's all these committees and boards as well. And a lot of them, they don't, they'll do a live stream because it's through the county, so it has to be public, but they don't record it and put it out anywhere. So like, I do a lot of that from home, like this is, some people don't know how to get involved. This is one thing I tell people, start just watching those because they're at random times when productive people can't really watch them. But if you're home or whatever, just record these things and just listen to what they're proposing. Because then it goes from like, you know, that committee, then to your city council where they're passing all this stuff. And it's, it's been fun to paying attention and making friends because now, and on Twitter, we blow them up all the time. Like my one friend's is basically friends, not friends with Lives of TikTok, but like Lives of TikTok's got plenty of material from Colorado constantly, which I, she's not my favorite, like that's not my favorite account, but when they blow that stuff up, that's local. I'm like, oh yeah, it's awesome. Like they had my mayor, they tried to push through. There are all these nonprofit things, the same stuff with moving all the immigrants in. They make all this money off these people, off of homeless people. So they keep them homeless, they keep them addicted. So they get more funding. It's all this. So they tried putting through, um, like a homeless shelter in this building they randomly bought. And like, people were like, uh, no, in the neighborhood, you know? This was a good thing because even Democrats in the neighborhood were against it. So they kind of start, got a little more involved and so they threw a meeting at one point and she was like yelling at the crowd, the mayor. And I, I got to know her because when I was campaigning, she was running for mayor. It was that same, so I got to know some of these people. And I, I got to know her because when I was campaigning, she was running for mayor, it was that same, so I got to know some of these people, like it's.
Are they just little authoritarians that want to just rule or what, what's your, or they, do they mean well and then they just have stupid ideas? Like what, what's your take on people who run for these positions?
I, I think in their heart, they do truly think they're meaning well, that when they make a hundred and fifty out of nonprofit and the nonprofit doesn't do anything, but they still feel they're virtuous. You know, there's all, I think they think they're virtuous, but it's all about money still. They hate capitalism and I'm like, you guys are worse. Like if you can just say bad things about capitalism, let's talk about this, you know, because it's money off the force of, you know, taxes. But they have it all planned out because even there was a vacancy recently, which I applied for, I knew I wouldn't get, but like. You have to do these things and like, we knew exactly who they were gonna pick because we know they're like. It, it's like a business to them, although it's so sad because it's not real business, it's just stealing money and money laundering, but. You see how they are all lined up for this position or that position and.
What do you, like, can we dig into that a little bit? What, what does being lined up mean? Because my, in my mind, I don't know anything. So in my mind, like let's say out here where I am in Florida. It's like, okay, there's, I guess, an election for putting up city council members and there's a vote and maybe, you know, if you get enough votes, you get on city. Is that how it works or is there some kind of other system that, you know, or, or what's the apparatus that exists that, you know?
That's how it should work. It's how it should work is like anybody who wants to do it, just go file and which technically can, but like out here, it's a regime, so like. They have people who were on the, the school board, say, and like they, they've groomed them up and like these kind of positions. And so then they, like one guy, the guy who got the vacancy was, he's been in government his whole life and a lawyer, of course, and like. It, it's just the position, it's just like, um, it's like in a regular business when you would like, if you work here for so long, you'll move up to, you know, but it's the government, so it's.
But does he, does he get in because, does he get in because? I guess what I'm thinking is like, if you're running for local office, people aren't paying attention. Like the, the citizenry isn't really paying attention to what's happening locally, so it doesn't take, it, it's a lower threshold for someone like that to be able to just get in. Then, then i- is that, is, I mean, does that make, I don't know if that makes sense, but is that what it is, is that people are just, the citizenry are too busy, they have their lives, they're. Working their jobs, so their eye is off the ball, and so that's what allows these people to hop in, or is it really like some kind of chain and command that? These people get in no matter if the citizen, the citizenry is active or not?
Well, I, I mean, we can get into voting machines and everything out here. I don't know that it's necessarily all legit. I think, but I think it's just not paying attention and they put, they tell whoever in this progressive chain, it is a chain of command to some extent. But even like I saw on my city council now, there's only one guy who's like conservative. And the rest are all these progressive, crazy, woke kind of people. And then also the, the problem is to a lot of the, if you're conservative GOP and you get on the, they get corrupt too, because they're like, oh, we're. It, it's just, it's so interesting what happens, but yeah, what was, oh yeah, it's how they like, it's just, they know who they're, they're gonna pick for the next position. Because they've been doing this, this and that on this committee, on that committee and. The people don't know and the people think, uh, like even the first time I met this, the lady who became mayor, she said something like. I'm a FDR Republican or something like that. And I'm like, what are you talking about? Like they're just like not even, they're just. Mu- money's ours and we're helping the city and there are real pro, I mean, there's development and all this stuff, which they sometimes do good on, but it's. They forced, this is what actually got me really, this was a little before COVID, uh, this is a big sprawling suburb out here. They said, you have to use our trash service now. They just voted that, they're like, you have to use our trash service. Well, people got up in arms, so like. No, that's stupid, like not enough people got up in ours. So then they say, okay, you can opt out of our trash service, but you still pay eleven dollars every two months on your. On your bill for trash service, you don't even use, like, this is what they do, they do.
I guess, man, the, the stuff gets me so. So Rado, but I, I guess my question ultimately is, uh, or what would you recommend, like for, for people? Dealing with their local city council government, uh, any, you know, what, what do you recommend? How do you fight this? Is, is it that you just gotta? Because I, I'm just thinking maybe it's more that people just need, need to be made aware of what's going on. And then if that's the case, if there's an easy way to get people involved that don't agree, then maybe that can be changed. I don't know, what is your? Thought on how to best navigate local politics?
Yeah, it is, the getting people involved part is the hardest part, like that is. I guess like the, if you're just somebody and you're like, I just want to just go to find out when a meeting is in person and go. And just see who's there, see what they talk about, start going a couple of times and then you'll meet other people. So like during the whole legislative session. I've met so many people through that because I meet the other people who show up and testify, which is sadly, not a lot of regular people, it's all these nonprofits begging for more money and. It's insane, but that's been the best way to build a coalition and then do that, but it really does take. Someone's just gotta go do it and make it, not say make it cool, but like to show like this is, you can do, do this, it's no big deal, you know? And, and it is hard to start paying attention. Like I said, they have all these meetings during the week that feeds into it, so. But like I said, you can watch that at home, so that's another thing, usually your city councils are livestreamed or put up later and you can watch that. Just to see who's involved, but I lucked out because of my Twitter following was so big and I had so many people that I was able to connect with out here. And we have, um, we have a thing called Liberty on the Rocks out here. And uh, it's pretty cool, it's not like libertarian, but it's like anybody who's kind of liberty minded comes and they're speakers and. So I met a lot of people through that because there's, there's some people who are like very political that would show up to that. And that's always cool too, is if you can, if you're somewhere where they have something like that, because I brought in a ton of different groups, like. We have locally, the We Are Change group kind of go there and like all these different, you know, different people come, just people who care about liberty a little bit and want to hear like. Scott Horton was here last week, you know, just to hear things like that, that helps people get involved, but it is a. Most people, I, I totally get why, like people will argue with me sometimes, I'm like, I'm just suggesting it, like people push back, like I can't do that, I don't, and I'm like, okay, then don't. Like, I don't know what to tell you, like, don't.
That bothers me. I get it, like people are busy, but I'm like, then don't complain. That's, that's my, how I feel. If you're gonna, then okay, accept that you're gonna get, have to use the state or whatever, the local garbage service. If you're not willing to put in the effort to, to, to get your voice heard and challenge these things, like that's where I get frustrated, I'm like, then don't complain, like stop complaining about it. Just accept it, we're all socialists now, you know, that's it, like, I mean, don't, I mean, you know what I'm saying? I don't know.
Yeah, or they're only say, like there, okay, yeah, there is the voting aspect, should more people should vote, even if it's. Even if it's not legit, right? And then like, there's all these different things people can be doing that are very small, very, but everyone, especially libertarians are so. Uh, purist and so it's all this and that and it's like, because people, when I was running for office, I have all these anarchists people online, which I mean, we're all kind of anarchists down at heart. Because we all would be able to live in a voluntary society, but the people who can't, obviously, you know, push back against it, but it's like. They were like, oh, you can't be getting into government, blah, blah, blah. And I'm like, why can't I just try this thing? Why can't we try this? You're still paying your property taxes, you're still doing everything. Why can't I try and do that? Like if you, you want to be so pure, but you're still just like everybody else and like, you know, we all.
It's, don't tell me what I can, don't tell me what I can and can't do, it's you who can't do it, like because you can't do it, don't project that on me.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, let's, let's get into that because that was a huge, you know, this last election cycle at the national level with Angela, you know, we interviewed her. I felt like it was a brilliant strategy, I felt like it was really smart and I feel like she's been vindicated by, you know, what's happened since Trump got back in, at lea- at the very least of Ross. Over getting free, um, you know, we'll see with the Department of Education, what, what happens with that, but, uh, I mean, yeah. What is it with libertarians or anybody who's oriented to liberty where we cannot just say, look. We agree on like ninety-six percent of these things over here, like, like we, like we. I would even include hardcore socialists, I'm like, look, we all want the Federal Reserve to disappear, we all are anti-imperialist, we're all, you know what I'm saying? Like, there's like so much that we agree on and if we can just put aside the bullshit, the ten percent bullshit that we disagree on. And at least take care of this ninety percent first, and we can do that, you know what I'm saying? Like, we can totally do that if, if we wanted to, I mean, what is it? I don't know, is it just part of our psychology, is it just part of our brain? Like we cannot form coalitions and get things done before we start, you know, we have to focus on that. Two percent of things that we don't agree on, I don't know, what's your, what's your take on all that?
Oh, I think part of it is those people just can't get along with people, so they see other people like getting along and being social with other people and they're like, oh, you can't do that. Which, that's just like a personal thing of theirs, but I also think because the party is so small, the people who are act, a lot of people who are actually involved with the party more. Are bureaucrat, they're bureaucrats still, like it's still, you have, it's, that's why I hate the parties because it's like, it's bureau, it's just another pain in the butt bureaucracy kinda. But I understand we need these tools, what, we can't let it, we've kept it going so long. But a lot of the people get in charge of it, especially because it's small, they think they're a big deal and then they're bureaucrats with it and it, but it's like, when I ran for office, I didn't know any of the GOP. Right in my area and then I met with them and they, they didn't end up running, so you know, they would have run someone, but they were like, so we made a, we made a deal. Like, you know, it's just stuff like that and it's, yeah, I don't get the, it comes from a lot of inexperience too. Because I think once you start actually, like I know my, the state, I go down this capital and people like know me, I know all these people were doing, we're talking bills and policy, like. The real nitty gritty stuff, I think once people start doing that. Your mind changes a little bit and you're like, okay, that's actually what's important and what I should be spending my time and not who's in control of this county affiliate or, you know, things like that. So I think it is an inexperience, which a lot of the libertarians prior to, especially prior to COVID, they were just their own little thing, right? And they didn't like. I'm sure different, some areas were better than others, but like they didn't do outreach and stuff here, like you had to like go find them or, you know, it's, wasn't like, um. Didn't know what was going on, very easy, but now it's better and, and we, we, it's all these different people showing up. Because if, guess what, the people in the GOP hate the GOP too, like they hate, like my local GOP, and all the, there's like an old guard and young guard. And like, you know, there's constant bickering and fighting and all this stuff, and so it's like all the people who actually like do stuff, kind of congregate together more and. Uh, yeah, and it just, I don't know why, like I, I thoroughly think it is the bureaucratic mind, like they just, it's all for the bureaucracy, it's not for the. The, like, doing anything, you know?
Hey, right. Hmm, I just want, I mean, maybe, maybe that's just the nature of government, I don't know if that's, you know, what it is, like. Put enough, put power in people's hands and they're all gonna fight for it or whatever and, and lose sight of what, why it really matters, I guess, I don't know.
Well, I, I think the problem is because human nature, like, we can't agree on anything, like we can't even agree that like. Like on anything, that murder is wrong, not one hundred percent of people agree murder is wrong. Like, somebody will come up with, yeah, because exactly, there's an exception, right? So somebody will say, well, what if you raped my, my sister? Can I not kill you now? Is that still, you know what I mean? We can't agree on anything, so I think that like, government's just a, a group of people just like us. Who just can't agree on shit.
I mean, and maybe it's just one of those things where you don't, I mean, I go back and forth, like maybe you don't need to care until you need to care. And then when it does, it just magically fixes, maybe, I don't know, I, I hope, I mean, because, yeah, I don't know.
I'm also curious to how much, like, we see the corruption and glow, and the bigger side of politics, but. Even at the local level, what it kind of kickbacks, deals, underhanded. Money is coming to even the lower end of politicians and kind of just goes under the table because. You know what I mean? They gotta be making deals with specific kind of, I don't know, contract or any. What if that's also just human nature? Because like, for example, like when you're, like, let's say your friend opens up a t-shirt company, you're like, hey, bro, give me a t-shirt. Now, you know what I mean? Like and your buddy's like, hey, take the t-shirt. Now if your buddy like runs the world, you know what I mean? It's, it's not a t-shirt anymore. It might be a couple Billy.
I just think, you know what I'm offended by is how cheap some of these people go for, like a hundred thousand dollars in campaign funds? And you're gonna sell out your entire county and all your people for that much money?
Not even some millions.
Man, come on, let's, let's raise the bar at least, let's get some more money in here, I mean, I don't know.
Yeah, our, one of our, one of our worst gun grabbers out here, he got a million from every town, so we are like, it's like.
See, okay, 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 gun grabber, we're talking now, alright.
He got right, his, one of his kids, his son died in the Aurora shooting and now he is filthy rich because of it. Like how, how could he live? And he's a nut, it's like I, that's getting to him because how can you do that? I was gonna say about the local stuff, what they do is nonprofits and they have their husbands working in the nonprofits and the NGOs and they have all their family. Everyone who works, like they, in a, in a business world, like if you want to give nepotism in your business, I don't care, it's your business, right? But in the government, that's all they do, is all their friends and family working at these nonprofits and so then they show up to testify to fund them more. Like one legislator lady, she's always complaining they don't make enough money, well, lo and behold, she makes a hundred and fifty from a nonprofit that does nothing. So like that's, that's what they do locally and so during COVID, they had all that COVID money, that's where it got really bad, COVID money, ARPA money. All this stuff, that was, that, that's the money that helped move all the forty thousand Venezuelans into, into Denver. It's all this taxpayer money going to these NGOs and nonprofits and.
Wow.
So that's how, that's how they do it locally is like, and even the Republicans do it too, they start like a nonprofit and just fund it. They just fund it and then get from it.
Okay, so, so two, two things, but the, the first thing is, um, the first thing is. This USAID thing, do you think it's gonna affect local politics and all? Are the NGOs getting money from USAID?
Well, they've all kind of like stopped here, the, the, the ones that brought the Venezuelans here more got that money from, I'm sure USA was part of it along the way too. But, um, the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA fund that they did early COVID, COVID, the, you know. So a lot of that money was going to Catholic charities, Jewish family services, losing family services, pick them up at the border and then it just trickled down. And tell these other nonprofit and all this money, it was human trafficking, it's human trafficking what was going on for money. Um, but so a lot of that stopped because I, I've seen at the border, they're not coming through, they've torn down the NGO camps, so they'd have all this food for them and stuff like that. Um, so it's weird locally because this is, you know, Trump, why, everyone's like, yeah, and then all of us in Colorado, you're not dealing with what we're dealing with out here. Because they, they have fortified all this stuff and they like, even before they were like, trying to push through all this money and all this. So it's, I hope it, I, I hope some stuff gets cut off federally that they don't, they were hoping to get. There is some, I think there is a lot, some of that is happening, but they're still taking so much money from the taxpayers in the state and the county and funneling it into these things. Like, like the, or the op, you remember the opioid settlements that everyone got, you know what that money does? In my county, that money helps make kits to keep people addicted to opioids. Because they get money for it, but they get money for it, like.
Well, yeah, okay. The, where I'm starting to feel like I want to build something that deals with local stuff, but, but this, okay, well, let's talk about this. Trenta Aqua Venezuelan thing, is that affecting your county and, and you're saying that they were, wow, they were importing Venezuelans? Because they were getting kicked back?
Yeah, so I mean, the people, the people are, I think they, they initially wanted them here for the, for voting because they made it easier to vote if you're an illegal. They literally built, like you can follow the bills they pushed through to make it so it was easier to vote, if you register, uh. If you've got a driver's license, which they made us so illegal to get a driver's license, you are automatically registered to vote. Unless you opted out because they, they sent this thing out, unless you're not a citizen, then you need to opt out, I'm like, yeah, I'm sure they did that, right? But, um, yeah, so this money was going into like all these funds and all these NGOs and so. There was this NGO, two NGOs out here, which I emailed the one lady and she emailed me back after all this was starting to go down. Uh, I wanted to get the full story, uh, Christopher Rufo on, um, Twitter back in September kind of helped break this and help get me like find more people to dig into. But yeah, they had these two NGOs that were funded to pay for rent to these apartments, right? So the apartments and these NGOs made a deal and the apartments, they tried to make it all the landlord's fault because it was basically turned into a slump, but when you have a gang taken over, like. They were trying to go do work there and like they would get chased away, but so they made a deal, the NGOs and this. Management company made a deal and they're like, they're writing checks left and right, like they're just like, this one lady says she wrote, like. Thirty-five hundred checks in a week, that was like deposit, you know, all this money going in there, but then of course the. Uh, management company got the money and then they just like let it go, there weren't nice apartments to start with. So it really did happen, they really, and it's in an area in Aurora, which is on the east side of Denver, it's not the best area anyways, it's already, always kind of known for. Like gang stuff, which I'm sure that's why they put them there, but Denver was getting money for putting them there, you know, and they basically paid, they brought them to hotels. And they would stay at a hotel for six months and then they started putting them in these apartments and then apartments just went to shit and. Yeah, I, I think it was for the voting, I, I can't, and, and people just made money doing this, but. Yeah, and they were trying to downplay it, even in my county, the guy who's running for commissioner who won against my friend. He, he would bring up Trump at campaign, I'm like, what does Trump and Aurora and this have to do with our county and our property taxes, you know, it's like that. They're, they're messed up, these progressives, they're just crazy.
At the end of the day though, just I'm wondering like who, who's, how are they getting, who's voting for these people? It's just normal people, normal people just being, like who were just low information voters, not the this people, but I'm just saying like. Like how are they getting into power? How are they getting these votes? Why are people supporting these types of individuals? They just not know what's really going on?
Uh, that, and there's a ton of, uh, like federal employees, so they're all gonna vote for their own good. And the, there really is in my county, a ton of these nonprofit and NGO employees. So of course they're gonna, not gonna like, they're gonna vote what's gonna help them.
Don't they live there? Like, like, don't they live in that community? Like why? I don't understand. Like, if, even if I was in one of these nonprofits and they're like, yo, I got an idea, we're gonna get rich. All right. We can get these Venezuelans in, in the community, put them up in these hotels. We don't know who they are, but whatever, you know? I mean, wouldn't, wouldn't, I would be like, wait, what do we hold, hold, yo, hold up. I understand. We gotta make some money off this shit, but like, we can't be just laying in anybody in our, in our, in our own neighborhoods and going to our schools or whatever. I mean, I don't know. It's just wild to me. Like, wouldn't they even think like this is gonna affect your community that you're a part of?
Yeah, it's hard to comprehend because even the local news, they, they now admit that it was happening, but back when it was all getting blown up, like this isn't happening. Crime rates are down, crime rates are dead. They kept saying this and I'm like, what good does that do you? Like, and there's all, there's child trafficking going on because there's no, you know, the, it's happening. And like these people have kids too. And I'm like, how, why, what good is it to say this isn't going on when you know it's going on? Like it's, it's, it makes you really, like stuff's happening in Colorado where it's like, it's made me have more faith in God. Cause I'm like, these people are Satanist or something like, I mean, they're, they like love abortion. They're all about aborting kids up until the day of birth and making the, you know, taxpayers pay for it. There's all, and that's all they talk about. That's all they talk about. And then like this stuff and they're trying to cover up crime just so they can cover up the money they were making off of it. And it's just, it's hard to comprehend that kind of like evil. I don't know. Yeah, it's bizarre.
Then you get, then you get on that forest, walk around a little bit, get some of that fresh mountain air, make those brain cells grow. That's what I think.
Yeah, that's, that's like my, I'm so thankful my parents still, they've, they don't live here full time, but they still have that property and stuff. So it's like, I get to go there whenever. And it's like, cause you do get, like I get worked up a lot. Cause if I'm watching like, uh, I'm having to listen to a, you know, a committee hearing all day. And then someone's calling me with politics talk and then I'm knowing, it just, it drives you insane. So it's nice to have that to like, cause our, and that's what I tell people too, is like, you can't, you will start getting burned out. You cannot get burned out. Just say, I can't pay attention to this right now. I can't like, I gotta take a break, take a couple of breaks. Like, oh, and this is something, sorry, I just want to say this gets out, but another thing people can do is you can information request your government. You can do your own dose. You can, uh, get your check register. They're supposed to be public, but most of them aren't. But you can get the check register and just start seeing where they're spending money. And like, do other, like I, we had this pedophile who got fired in the school district and I did a, I wanted to see what his emails were. So I did a request right away, but then he killed himself on New Year's Eve because he was guilty. Which is like, it's one of those things where it's like, yeah, but then they were like, well, are they gonna stop the investigation? Cause I think it's a big ring in this, in the public schools going on, but, but it was interesting because then like I got the, I finally got the request back after he died. So it's like, oh, you're reading, I'm reading a dead man's emails, you know, it's like, there's just cool stuff like that. You can, not cool, but you know, there's stuff like that, people.
If it's gonna lead to finding out more about what could be a threat to the community, then yeah, whatever, who cares? Like, you know, read those emails.
Save the kids.
Save the kids. Gotta save these kids out here. Um, I guess my last question about just the local stuff is sort of, wha- what do you recommend? Somebody out here, they're tired of it. They're just, DZ out here tired of all these pedophiles and these bad people and these NGOs, like what, what should someone do? And your recommendation, if you're gonna get involved in local politics, how should, what's the number one thing to do that would be, say, the most effective thing to do?
Go into the meetings in person and seeing other people who you might agree with and then start and just, start and just getting with them and cooperating with them and they'll know some people and then you'll just keep building and they'll know. Like I tell people, I have like a big legislative chat and I'm like, do you want to just be in there? Cause then you can just read it, you know, from the other one. You don't have to participate. So that's, that's the best way is just go show up and start meeting people. Hopefully there's other like-minded people there. You'll know obviously if they're yelling at them at public comment and stuff like, so you can find your, I found a guy just because he did, he did this hilarious parody during one of the gun bans last year where he was like, he's, we were all watching it, like we were in a chat, watching it and this guy's like, hey comrades, blah, blah, blah. And we were like, what's, what's this guy's being so openly calm? And then like halfway through, we're like, oh, he's doing a joke. And it's like, now he's a big part of everything too. Like that's how, that's the best way to find people. That's the best way to start. You just gotta find people. I would, I would do that over even finding like party stuff, like that stuff can be cool too. But like, I think just going, just go and you'll find the other people who care. And then like, I wouldn't be, I have so many people who tell me so much information. And that's like, thank God, because you cannot find it all out yourself. So the more people you got, better.
Right. All right, goats. You know, you know what to do. Get involved, do something. I gotta start watching these streams, these locals. Um, let's do a lightning round. Let's talk about some things going on in the culture. Get your take, get your hot takes. Um, we, I mean, do you care at all about this Epstein thing? We gonna get anything? Is it, oh, well, that's a good question. A lot of people are mad on Twitter and X about, you know, we don't, we wanted it now. All right. You said day one, Trump, we're getting all the Epstein stuff. And now it seems like it's taking a little bit more time. I'm just curious, like, is that, when you look at that, just as an outside perspective, are you like, yep, they're going through the rigmarole of, you know, all this bureaucratic shit they gotta do, or you like, you know, feel like that they're holding things up and there's something weird going on?
Uh, definitely something weird going on. Cause why, there was like forming committees and stuff and to let it go. And then obviously what happened yesterday was just weird. It's just like weird. It was, and then, but, and then I've talked, I have my, my friend Brad Binkley of propaganda report. He's like, a lot of the information I guess is that they released is already out there and like, they haven't really released anything new. And no one's getting arrested. So what was even, yeah, why can't we just have this unredacted list? And they, they're playing all these games and.
And the list was already something that was dropped anyway, and there's nothing new there. It's already unredacted. Somebody, you know? But I don't even know what the, they're saying that it's like the, you know, the New York field office or something. Well, then why don't they just send a bunch of, I mean, send the FBI in there and go to town. Like what's, what's the deal? I don't know.
Yeah.
It was weird.
Who knows?
Feels weird.
That's a big club that we are not a part of. Thank God. Epstein Club.
Uh, what do you, okay, you know, as we all know, you're a woman online. All right. Just gonna, just gonna put it out there. What do you think of this whole, I don't know if you've seen any of it, but I know you're on the same cast at, at times and stuff like that. So what do you think of this incel versus only fans? Sort of like war of the sexes, culture thing. Do you feel like it's just insane inflated thing? Or do you feel like there's some validity to it? And, and you know, should men become virgin incels? Until, until they find the one and get married and, and, and just for the record, you know, uh, you know, we have a married man here, Mr. DZ. Uh, we have a, we have a man in a, in a, in a serious relationship here, Mr. Fresh. Um, but I'm just, I'm fascinated by it because it just seems so out, like so outlandish on both sides. It seems like, we, like growing up in the eighties and nineties, it was a nice, I liked, you know, me and Fresh were talking about, you know, a couple of times where it was a nice, like six days of sin. You know, the seventh day you repent or whatever, and then we're good. We get back to it. What's your take on this whole sort of cultural divide?
It's, well, it seems like psyop, I guess I'll say use that word. It seems, yeah, it's definitely for like terminally online people and all this. And I remember whenever like Pearl started making the rounds on Twitter and then that whatever podcast and all this stuff and like more just like forced influencers on it. I was like, I love, I love being misogynistic. I mean, like there's, there's ways to do it, right? But they, they've taken it to this like weird step and it's all these influencers who their lives are, they have no right to tell anybody how to live. Uh, you know, with their, how messy their lives are. So I, yeah, I think it's just something that's probably pushed just to keep people fighting amongst themselves about that. Cause it's like, you can literally live your life how you want. You want to be in an cell? Like just do it. Why do you have to go online and fight about it? Like, and like, like the only, the people just hating all the only fans. So I was like, what? Just ignore it. Don't like, look, I don't look at it. Like, I don't know. It's why.
Making too much sense. Dang it. All right. We gotta do one or the other.
I know.
Well, also like, does your algorithm have only fans models? Cause mine doesn't. Like I know that when I'm scrolling, I don't see any of it. So.
No.
I mean, mine's got.
I've blocked like, blocked all the like, big accounts are pushing out stuff like Pearl and all. I blocked them a long time ago. So I don't see like all that, like, and people get really, I under, like, there's something about lifestyles that people love to argue about. Mine's best. You should do this, you know? And like, I could just, it just pulls people in and they just have to like, talk about it and say their way is best. So I, I think it's a human thing and I do think it is a nat, a little unnatural, like how big it is.
Yeah. I mean, I think it's just, maybe it's magnified now because, because there's always been do's ain't getting done. You know what I'm saying? Since the beginning of time. That's what entire classical tones of, of people invading, you know, what's, what's her name? That the baddie from back in the day, uh, in, in Greek times, Helen, Helen Troy, you know what I'm saying? And, and, and Brody simpin', you know, pretty hard out there and sent a whole army. And so it's always been there. I just think now it's like the internet's here and social media is here. So it's like anybody, any dude that's having a hard time, you know what I'm saying? They're gonna bond with other people and then they're gonna, you know?
Yeah. Misery, misery loves company. And then the, I always love those, the incels who are like, no, my face, I don't have a specific Chad face, blah, blah. And I'm like, I'm a girl and I don't even look at my like flaws that closely, like stop. And it's the internet that did that, right? Like, no one would think that way. Like, oh, I'm, I'm never gonna find a perfect woman because my nose is too big as a man saying this stuff like.
Look at my nose. I got a woman. We're fine.
Yeah. Like I.
I'm, I'm not fun. I gotta get the jaw implant. So I'm like, like the Chad jaw implant.
Oh my gosh.
It's not the jaw.
I gotta get the methylene blue.
Well, it might be the jaw, but it's not the shape of it. It's that it moves too much. Close the jaw sometimes. Maybe you'll be okay.
Dang it.
Damn, roasted.
What about, uh, what do you think about RFK Junior, Maha? Are we gonna get healthier? Like, look steak or shake, shake, steak and shake, whatever it called? Listen, speaking to America here, the golden age is back. We got the tallow in the fries. Done. Maha achieved or no?
No more seed oils.
Some of that, yeah. Can you send some, some of that over to Canada? Like I'm really tired of seed oils. I'm working really hard to get rid of my tits and it, it's crazy.
Our seed oil's that bad? What, what, what's, what's the story for his mom? What, what is Maha achieved now?
So I think it's just anytime I knew it, it's like, yeah, it probably isn't great, but if there was one less bad ingredient Oreos, they're still gonna be Oreos, you know, like, I don't know if the people just, I've always just been a mo, like moderate what eat kind of person. Like I, I think it'll be nice. The culture will be nice that more people will be like, oh, like, cause during COVID, remember they didn't like push health, which is like the best thing for fighting a cold is just like being healthy is, you know, working out, getting sun. They never pushed any of that. When they had everyone's attention, they're like, no, just take this medicine. But so that didn't really change people. So maybe it'll be a cultural thing. I don't know how, I'm libertarian. So I don't know how I feel about like the banning of stuff. Um, but I, I don't know. They had, they put all the ingredients on stuff before and people were still fat. So like, are they, this time they're gonna start reading all the ingredients now, or you know what I mean? Like, I don't know.
I mean, that's not really true though, right? Because like these, these seed oils and stuff have been put into, to foods more recently and ob, and ob, and obesity and stuff has like drastically increased as well, right?
Also like bread.
Yeah. For example, why is there soy in white bread? Why, like? It doesn't really make sense.
Yeah, they're sneaking in.
Yeah.
What are you gonna say?
I was just like talking, there's a lot of other countries that have bans on a lot of stuff that's in our food. So I think like maybe bringing a standard to what's like universally agreed upon, like, yeah, this stuff is pretty much poison. And there's really no reason for it, especially like food dyes and stuff where like you're probably find a natural source of color. That's not gonna, you know, potentially cause cancer or whatever the hell. Cause at the end of the day.
Right?
Yeah. Most of the food companies here, they kind of free range to put all kinds of extra preservatives and stuff that just to increase their profit margin over our health. Like that's all that matters.
Subsidy and they got subsidies for it too. Like that stuff, that should end, that, that's something the government should do. It was like, get rid of the subsidies for all this crap they're putting in.
Right, right. I guess my, my thing, I mean, on the, from the libertarian side, I'm kind of like, you know, buyer beware. I've always felt that way. But I do think that, you know, a big part of libertarianism is, you know, or one of the areas of regulation, I guess is fraud. So I guess my question is like, how much fraud is taking place? Like if you say something's an organic fruit and you're advertising it as such, and then you're putting chemicals in it that you're not alerting the person to, maybe it's a little bit of a gray area there, but, but I hope that's the way it goes. It's more just like, look, you know, you can't do false advertising. Here's, you know, if you're gonna say this, then you gotta say exactly this to make sure that you're not committing fraud. So I think there's, I think there's a middle ground between not banning everything or not whatever, and being able to be as transparent as possible so that you're not, you know, taking something that you didn't know you were taking or something. But I think you're right too, like.
In, in the true free market though, we wouldn't ban it. People would just stop eating it, right? So if you, if people are not willing to stop eating it, then putting a regulation on it.
Yeah, that's an, that's like an informed consent thing, you know, like they, there's a lot of money that goes into probably hiding, you know, the potential risks involved with eating a lot of that shit because they want to use it so that they can make more money. So like, that's another thing that's more important is like, fine. If they're gonna use it, everyone should actually know what eating that does to you. But because there's money to, to be that, to be gained there, they're gonna try to hide that and they're gonna put stuff in there that you shouldn't probably be eating, you know?
Well, perfect example of that, like, uh, inform, quote unquote, informed consent that we didn't have was the food pyramid, right? They lied to us and said, and told us, right?
It's probably been one of like the most lobbied things since the beginning of time, right? Cause like sugar is now, it's like sugars the culprit and fat was once the culprit and you know, enough fiber and like, they just keep changing what is supposed to be your, your diet. And, and honestly, that's different for everybody. So I think people are figuring that out.
Yeah, they got paid off too. The sugar thing, like they paid, they paid them off to say, oh, that's fine.
Right. Sugar's probably the most evil drug.
Sugar's fine. Put vending, pop vending machines in grade six classrooms.
Damn. All right. Well, I guess, I guess my, you know, we'll close it out here, but my final question to you, Forrest mommy is the future of libertarianism. You know, are, are you hopeful about America becoming a more free society? Or do you feel that we're just, you know, with Trump being in, are we just switching out one master for another? Is it, is it, or are we actually gonna be making some progress towards liberty at, at least maybe at a, a general scale, but you know, maybe on the local scale as well?
Yeah. I mean, like it, he's doing stuff that's liberty minded, right? More than anybody else has in a long time. If, if it's all fake or not, who knows? But I would, I'm hopeful for that. Even in Colorado, I'm hopeful. Cause people give up on Colorado and left and all, and I'm like, I'm still hopeful, especially with all the people I've met. The Democrats that are turning against the Democrats here, you know, I, so I feel hopeful, like they, it is like, oh, are we just gonna keep pushing back and forth, back and forth? Are we actually gonna limit the government? Like, are you actually doing this? So I'm hopeful. I have to, I'm like, every day I have a black pill time and then I like, you know, it's like every, it's just up and down every day. But I just started to say hopeful, because
Right.
I don't know. Think I see things happening. I've connected with people and stuff like that. That gives you hope. So I'll be hopeful.
Yeah. I guess you gotta keep a balance of black and white pills and have a fresh set of red pills handy as needed, you know what I'm saying? So.
Just keep your medicine.
Don't be promoting pharmaceuticals.
Know what pill you'll need.
We're not against drugs on the show. I've said it before, uh, plenty of drugs.
You can't be libertarian and anti really anything except like maybe the current establishment.
I always tell people like, I was never on birth control, but I have done plenty of other drugs. So you know, like, I'm not ju, I'm not trying not to judge, but
Yeah.
At least that, that, the drugs I did supported, you know, the black market, which is the real market. The black market is the free market. So I was supporting that.
You heard it here first. Make every market a black market.
It's true.
All right. Uh, so I think we're gonna, unless anybody else has anything they want to ask our guest. And if not, then I think we'll close it out. Uh, first of all, thank you very much, uh, Forrest mommy for coming on the goat show. As we do on the show, we like to do a goat toast to the goats and you were one of them. So, oh, I need to refill mine actually. I want to do a half, half glass of slacker, of pure moonshine. That's what I'm drinking.
No, you're not. No, you're not.
Moonshine, baby. I've, I've been, I hold my liquor well. Uh, cheers to you.
Cheers.
And I wanna pour one out. I wanna pour one, we do pour one outs here. We, we, we don't have to do it. I'll do it. Uh, I don't know, local Colorado government, we gotta pour one out. It's over for you, all right? We're gonna rise up. We're gonna stop you from doing all the things you're doing. Your days are numbered. Uh, JoJo, whoever you are, I've met you, but, pour one out for Doc's and, she's done it. Coming for you. Well, no, I, don't take it too seriously. I don't want FBI freaking coming. I'm just saying. You know, although Cash Patel, my, my Jeter's in there, so I think we won. We won, dog. You and me. Um,
We'll see. Epstein files, full Epstein files, like, day one, like he said, but hasn't happened, so.
Holding your feet to the fire, Cash. Come on now. Come on now, buddy. Let's make it happen. All right, well, with that, thank you once again. Appreciate you coming on the show. You're invited back anytime you like. This has been amazing.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you. Appreciate you coming on the show. Uh, Fresh, what do the people gotta do before we, uh, get on out of here?
Gotta like, subscribe, comment, hit the bell, send it to your mom, your aunt, your uncle. Everybody liberty and fuck you.